We will just jump right in with the appointment to the Baltimore County Animal Hearing Board. Jaclyn Scotto and John Christiana.
Yes, sir.
First, John first? No, Jaclyn. We'll start with, we welcome you and you up for the, you're up for the Baltimore County Animal Hearing Board. Would you have any remarks?
Um, I've been on it for two years. I would just like to continue. Um, it's nice to be able to, a lot of people just don't know the laws and regulations. So it's nice to be able to help them understand it. And a lot of them don't come back once they're on the board. I just really enjoy volunteering to do that.
Okay, thank you so much for your service.
Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the members? Okay, we thank you and we look forward to voting on your appointment Monday.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. John Christiana? You're muted, sir. You are muted. And I can't unmute you.
Turn your volume up. Okay.
All right, John, you're unmuted. Any comments?
Can't hear you.
Is this Carmen's husband?
Uh huh.
Still muted.
He's unmuted, but we can't, he must not have a, um, his speaker must not be working. I mean, his microphone, not his speaker. My apologies. Um.
Okay, any questions or comments from the members? And I guess he can get back to us Monday when he'll appear again or if he can get it to work.
He's, he's saying one moment.
All right. I can't see that.
Is that a number five?
What's he say? I, I can.
I can dial in.
He's saying he'll dial up.
Okay, fantastic. All right, Chris, he'll be calling you.
Put it closer to the screen.
They've seen the light.
I can dial in. He needs the number.
I thought it said, I heart Todd.
Tell him the number.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
They've seen the light and they're moving to the third district, the Christianas are.
Okay, that's good. It's a beautiful place, the third district.
The best, yeah, I agree. Didn't you say it's the best?
I said you.
No, I think he says it's the best. It's what I heard.
Yes, I agree in it. Beautiful. I love C. Okay, uh, Chris, did you send him the number? Just tell him the number to call him. He can hear.
Okay, my apologies. Let me, um, give me one second. I'm glad I had this up. One moment. Um, bear with me one second. I just have to get to our website because I don't know it off the top of my head. So you need to dial one, four, one, five, six, five, five, zero, 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 one. And the access code is two, three, zero, seven, eight, two, five, one, seven, nine, three.
Saying back, start over.
Start over? Okay, how about, would it be easier, Mr. Chair, if you go ahead and move on? And then what I'll do is I will, I have to believe we have his email. I can email him a direct attendee link. And he can, um, or the direct information and he can dial in. And then we can do it from there. That way you can move on and I can give him the information he needs via email.
Absolutely wonderful idea. Now we'll move on to, uh, we look forward to hearing from you later, John. And now we will move on to another appointment to the Police Accountability Board, Mr. Francis Ward, who was not with us last week. Mr. Ward?
Yes, sir.
Could you, uh, you have any, uh, any information you'd like to share with us?
Well, I've been involved with the county, um, with the fire department. I started in nineteen seventy-five. I've worked in communications in the nine-one-one center until two thousand and six, when I had a couple of heart attacks. And I had to retire. I've worked with the State of Maryland now as a court constable. Since two thousand and six, I'm still employed there. And I'm still with, uh, White Marsh Volunteer Fire Company.
Okay, great. Well, you know your camera's not on, just in case you, if you wanted to put it on. Okay. Meanwhile, are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks?
Well, thank you very much. Frank would be the fifth district appointee to this board. I recommended him for this position and I thank the county executive for supporting his nomination. He has a stellar record in public safety. He, um, not only has served in the nine-one-one center, uh, and not only works currently for the district court, but Frank, how many years have you been a volunteer firefighter? Over forty?
Yeah, about forty-five, forty-six years.
Yeah, forty-five, forty-six years as a volunteer firefighter. I think he has splendid qualifications and he'll bring a great perspective to this board. Mr. Ward, just to be consistent, um, you know, I asked everyone else the same questions. Can you just provide some thought on what you'd be looking at? At the quarterly meetings of the PAB? And also, if you have any experiences with the police you'd like to share?
Oh, first off, I'd like to point out that I'd definitely be there with an open mind. Looking at all aspects of whatever we're reviewing. Fairness and equality is the biggest thing that I look at.
Very good. And do you have any experiences you want to share or your interactions with the police?
I work in communications. You, you interact with them all the time, um, good and bad. And now that I work for the district court, I do the same, same thing. There's times we have to call the police. We have good experience, we have bad experience. And we work through it and get things done.
Okay, thank you very much. And Frank, thank you very much for your long public service to Baltimore County.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. Any additional questions, comments? Uh, did you, did you have something, Councilwoman Bevis? No? Okay. All right. Well, listen, thank you, Frank. We certainly appreciate your service to the county. And we look forward to, uh, voting for you, uh, Monday. And your vote will come up. And, uh, there's no other questions. We will move forward.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Sure, thank you. Now we move on to page twenty. Mr. Rob O'Connor? You have a contract for painting some radio towers.
That is correct. Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting approval of two contracts with Allstate Tower and Baytown Painting and Marine Repair to provide painting services for the county-owned radio towers using conjunction with the county's eight-hundred megahertz radio system. Each contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and will automatically renew for four additional one-year periods. This was a competitive RFP selected by best experience and best price. Compensation may not exceed four hundred and seven thousand, five hundred dollars for both contractors combined for the entire five-year term, including the renewal and extension periods.
Okay, are there any questions or comments from the members? I do have a question. Uh, if I can get my hands on it in a second. Has to do with the amount of money that was chosen. It would appear that this contract is a lot more than two other contracts. I'm looking for it right now. But that's the gist of the question.
So there were two, I, I think that the question that came from the auditors, maybe, sir, was the difference in pricing between the two companies?
Yes.
Okay, so, um, we did select two companies. Allstate Tower was only selected, well, Allstate Tower is going to be assigned, the North and South Towers on top of the courthouse on Bosley. All other towers are being assigned to Baytown Painting because Baytown Painting had better pricing for the remaining towers. It is in our purview that if, the contract language is written, I should say, that if one were unable to perform due to bankruptcy, et cetera, other issues, we could use the other. However, we may also be able to term, we also are allowed to terminate and we could rebid if pricing is too excessive.
Okay, is that, um, any additional questions or comments from anyone, including the auditor?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilman?
Um, Mr. O'Connor, how often do we paint these towers?
Uh, that's a great question. I believe it's every ten years. It's, they get inspected on review.
Okay, because I was trying to think where the towers are on Bos, on the old courthouse on Bosley. So they're on the roof of the building?
That is correct. There's two small towers, yes.
Okay, I, there, I have never noticed them and I just.
They're smaller towers, sir, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Directly connected to the nine-one-one system.
Gotcha, thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. O'Connor. We appreciate you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. We'll move on to Kevin Reed, who, uh, page twenty-four, starting with a purchase order.
Uh, yes, sir. Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and Councilmembers. Um, fiscal matter two is a request to approve a contract with Quadient Incorporated to provide annual maintenance for our mailroom equipment. Uh, we do still get mail in the county and, uh, the Office of Budget Finances mailroom, uh, is the, the main sorter for all internal county agencies. This contract commences on July one of twenty twenty-two and continues through August thirty-first of twenty twenty-three and compensation may not exceed forty-three thousand, nine hundred and fifty-two dollars for the one-year term and two months. The contract was awarded, uh, through a cooperative purchase procurement of an existing competitively bid state of Arizona contract to which Maryland is a participating entity and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? None? Okay, we will move right on to page twenty-seven. Pinnacle Actuary?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, fiscal matter three is a request to approve a contract with Pinnacle Actuarial Resources to provide actuarial services for the county's workers' compensation, automobile and general liability self-insurance program, also known as our twenty-eight program for general government and CCBC, who is an affiliate member. The contract commences upon council approval, continues for one year, and will automatically renew for four additional one-year periods with the option to extend the initial term or any renewal term thereof for a hundred and twenty days. Compensation may not exceed a hundred and thirty thousand, two hundred and ninety-four dollars for the entire five-year term, including, uh, renewals. And, um, the contractor, on top of what we used to put together some budgetary figures as well as our, um, annual financial report, um, may provide additional actuarial consulting services such as looking at structures and, um, our services, stop-loss insurance and any proposed pricing due to changes in, in legislation that we have to deal with as a self-insured entity. This was, uh, contract was awarded through a competitive procurement process based on qualifications and experience, um, with, from three proposals received.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Okay. Do we have any questions for this, Lauren?
There's one.
Yeah, I think we, the, the question related to the consulting, what are our services? And, you know, the additional like review and analysis of any pending legislation, that's always good to have included in the contract.
Okay. You good, Lauren? All right, thank you. Now we will move on to, uh, but page thirty-one? Another contract?
Yes, sir. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Uh, the administration is requesting approval of a contract with Voya Benefits Company, LLC to administer the county's flexible spending accounts, our FSAs, including health-dependent transit and parking, as well as our health savings account that is combined with our, uh, high deductible optional employee plan. The contract, uh, also includes Cobra Administration and Retiree Healthcare Billing. This contract commences on January one of twenty twenty-three and continues for five years and will automatically renew for seven, one-year period. Estimated compensation is seven hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars over the cost of the entire contract. This original, the, the original contract was awarded through a competitive negotiation procurement based on technical qualifications, experience and cost out of five proposals that received. And, um, you know, just, just a, a PSA really that, that these FSA accounts are great tax incentives and advantages for our employees. And, um, you know, during open enrollment, it's definitely something that, you know, can lower your taxable income as well as those for the employer. So it's something that we'd like to encourage people to definitely research.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Ketch?
But thank you very much. Uh, I, uh, have a, uh, a health insurance plan through the Board of Education of Baltimore County. And, uh, this company, Voya, is used by them, uh, to, uh, bill certain retirees. And I just caution, uh, the administration to please, um, uh, follow the company, please, um, make sure that, uh, well, let, let me just be upfront. They're very confusing. Um, I get, I pay the bill upfront for the entire year. Uh, I keep getting additional bills for small amounts of money. And, uh, please monitor them and, uh, let's hope that they can do a better job with, uh, the county government than they do with the Board of Education. Uh, the statements that they send to me are, um, I would say are not, um, up to date. They're not modern. It looks like somebody just goes and makes a copy on a copier and sends it out. Uh, they don't really have any explanations. Uh, they just send bills and bills and bills. So, uh, if you would please monitor them and, uh, you know, just to make sure, sure, make certain that, uh, what they're doing is accurate. Uh, we're getting so many complaints about the Board of Education and the health insurance, especially for retirees. Uh, let's not get into the same situation, uh, with this company that, uh, is occurring with the Board of Education. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Ketch. Uh, yes, Ms. Rogers? You're muted? You're muted, Ms. Rogers?
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, Councilman Ketch, you have our absolute assurance that we will be monitoring this program as we do with each of ours. The programs that Voya will administer for us are supplemental, um, programs for active, uh, employees that help to reduce, um, you know, in essence, your, uh, liability. Plus, there are savings, uh, programs versus bills that you would get for any kind of services. But I just want you to know that we have been actively engaged with, uh, BCPS regarding the retirement, the retiree, uh, issues about the billing that tie back to some of the issues with the ransomware attack. And we are actively engaged with trying to find solutions for those issues, but it's two, two different products.
Yeah, I, uh, my, the insurance I have is dental insurance through the Board of Education. And, uh, you know, all, all I can say is the statements that I get from them and, uh, as I said, there, there's no accounting for uh, the extra money that they're billing us. I mean, it's not a lot of money, but they, you know, this is happening. And, uh, I, the statements that I get, uh, that we get don't look very professional. I'll put it to you that way. So, uh, uh, I feel, um, better that our, that the county is going to be monitoring this program and, and, uh, I just think it's a shame that the Board of Education isn't, uh, very open to us, helping them as well with their issues, but that's a whole different story. But thank you very much. I appreciate it.
You're quite welcome, sir.
Any additional questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Councilman Marks?
Uh, thank you. I'd like to thank Ms. Rogers for those assurances because, um, I'm sure every one of our offices has been deluged with complaints about the school system and, um, the benefits that people are, are receiving and the overcharges they may have gotten. So, uh, Ms. Rogers, thank you for your statement and your commitment to, uh, to watch this carefully.
Thank you. Mr. Chair?
Councilman, uh, Marks?
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilman Crandall?
Um, uh, uh, thanks, uh, Mr. Chair. Uh, was this, uh, was this contract competitively bid?
Yes, sir.
Okay, um, is, is Voya a, a local company or are they out of Baltimore County, out of state?
Uh, they, I'm sorry, they, um, they're not a local company. Uh, I do not know exactly where they're located.
New Hampshire.
New Hampshire.
Okay, uh, thank you, Councilman Ketch. Um, the, the reason I ask is there, there are a number of third-party administrators, um, that are local. And I was wondering if they had the opportunity to bid.
Of, of course I did, yeah. And the, the local administrators and we, we had a handful of bidders and, um, you know, the, these were deemed, uh, Voya was deemed the most reasonable and responsive, um, in relation to what we were looking for.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mr. Reed. Uh, I appreciate it. And I, I'll just join my, my colleagues in the sentiment that, uh, uh, the, in, in the, the admonition, I guess you could call it, that the, the county really oversee uh, this particular contractor and, uh, and their services, uh, to our folks. Uh, thank you, Mr. Reed.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Crandall. And now, uh, if there's no more questions, we'll move on to the big one, uh, page thirty-six. Employee Health Insurance Programs.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um, yes, the big one, you'll see a lot of, a lot of dollar figures in here. Um, uh, we appreciate the time tonight. I wanted to spend a few minutes, um, talking about fiscal matter five, which is part of a package that includes five contracts, uh, that we are seeking approval on to administer our health employee programs. Uh, with me today is, uh, I believe Becky Ellis, our health insurance administrator, is on the call, as well as Mark Lynn of Bolton Partners, who is our healthcare consultant, that can insist with any questions that may arise. And I wanted to start out by giving some background on the work that has been done to get us to this point because it did start about a year ago. And having these top-notch partners in the delivery of our healthcare programs is obviously very important, um, to our employees and to us. So as you're aware, the current health plan contracts expire December thirty-one of twenty twenty-two. And the Health Insurance Division of OBF started working on a procurement process last summer and fall. An evaluation committee was formed, um, also known as the Healthcare Vendor Selection Committee, was created to determine what proposals should be recommended from the highest rated, which will serve the best interest of the county in accordance with our procurement regulations. And the committee convened in November of twenty twenty-one. And, and we expanded the committee to include partners from, uh, county labor, uh, Baltimore County Public Schools Administration, Baltimore County Public Schools Labor, the Community College of Baltimore County, the Baltimore County Public Library and county OHR staff, because, uh, those component units are affiliates in our self-insurance program. And we took a different approach and we wanted the process to be as open and transparent as possible, um, within the confines of what's allowed with purchasing and policies procedures. And we also have sent out surveys, um, one last August, um, to help the committee in addressing like, what are the gaps in services that we see from our administrators? What particular areas are important to us? What works well and what doesn't? And what would we like to see out of the future? So we really spent this work upfront, um, a little bit different than a traditional process in that we engaged our employees, our component unit partners in the self-insurance fund and the committee on the front end for feedback on what we wanted. And an important note that I really want to stress is that this process, we are not bidding out benefits. The structure of how employees and retirees are charged are not changing with these contracts below. The committee was just looking at the, who is the best partners to administer the existing plans in place. Any change to structures of the plans that the county government would implement is worked out during the labor negotiations process. So again, we're self-insured and we're looking for third-party administrators, um, for a majority of these plans. So we are looking for who would be the best partners, uh, whether it was from the administration, member engagement, customer service, from a wellness focus, the history of managing costs or coordination of medical and pharmacy, and who could help us achieve some savings that we could ultimately pass down to our members. So the outcome of that is, um, the current vendors of the five are, um, for the new proposed contracts taking place for our medical, which is our Open Access Plus, Open Access Plus it Network. High deductible plan, prescription and employee assistance program is Cigna. And our fully insured staff model HMO is Kaiser Permanente. Our dental traditional PPO is Care First, Propose's Care First Blue Shield, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield. Our dental health maintenance organization or DHMO is Cigna when that's a fully insured program. And our vision plans, uh, Propose is National Vision Administrators. And these proposals were awarded through a competitive procurement and negotiation process. And the committee scored and reviewed these technical, technical proposals and made, uh, recommendations on who scored the highest. So when we, when we look at the, uh, figures in the fiscal summary section of the fiscal note, please note that the figures included, include estimated costs for our component units as well. These are not just costs to Baltimore County government. That the estimated compensation, if we're looking at just for general county government for the initial five-year term is eight hundred and ninety-six million dollars. And the figure includes about two hundred and twenty million in, in adjusting and claims fees. When we talk about savings, the, the real win for the process is these new contracts will result in five-point-six million dollars in savings to general government and its employees. So to put that in perspective, how we, how we see, see that and realize that is the twenty-twenty-three rate increases that will be available soon, were able to be reduced from where they were. When we were looking at, we always factor in a five percent, but we were closer for medical at six-point-one percent. Have been be able to reduce to a two-point-two percent for medical. Four-point-four went to three-point-six for dental and there will be no increases for vision. So enterprise-wide, including our component units, we will achieve estimating savings of fifteen-point-seven million dollars in FY twenty-three, or excuse me, calendar twenty, twenty-three alone. So, uh, you know, as noted, these contracts will be passed down to the employees. So the, the five contracts have initial terms of five years, um, effective January one of twenty twenty-three to December thirty-one of twenty twenty-seven. And thereafter, they can renew for an additional seven, one-year, uh, renewals. And, uh, Mr. Chair, if I may, before, um, that we open up for questions, uh, if, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Administrative Officer Rogers to see if she has anything to add about, um, these items. If that's okay.
Sure, that's fine. Ms. Rogers?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And, uh, Kevin, thank you so much. I wanted, Mr. Chair, to just hear a little bit of insight, uh, about what was different this time because. uh, about what was different this time, because this was the first time, uh, the county has endeavored to go through an R, R F P process in this manner. Um, and again, want to thank Mr. Reed and the members of the insurance team and also, uh, Bolton for their assistance. What we did this year, well, it, it took a year to, to do. We convened a interdisciplinary team to review all of the, the proposals that came in. And what I mean about that, historically, we have done this just within general government side, but we included colleagues from the school system, from the library, from the community college, and also, uh, from the, the, the staff. Dr. Branch, uh, had an opportunity to weigh in, and H R. And why that's important is because the administrators just don't administer benefits for general government. They administer benefits for the entire enterprise of county government. So having the perspectives from our partners, uh, in other parts of the government was very, very insightful. Our representatives from, uh, the union participated. Those are representatives who, uh, work with us around the, uh, throughout the year. The Healthcare Review Committee, two representatives from our unions, uh, from the Healthcare Review Committee, two representatives from the school system, uh, one representative from library, and one from community college. That way, we get the full insight when we are looking at the needs for employees here in the county. And as Mr. Reed indicated, uh, collectively, we will, um, arrive at, uh, savings for not only general government with these, these new, uh, administrator contracts. Uh, we will also realize savings across the entire county government enterprise, our colleagues in the school system, uh, uh, libraries and as well as community college. So I want to thank, uh, the representatives who put lots of time and energy into this process, um, making it very transparent for us to come up with the, um, successful, uh, bidders.
Thank you, Ms. Rogers. Are there any questions or comments from the members? Well, I'll start. I, uh, Mr. Reed, uh, uh, thank you for your explanation as related to the Healthcare Vendor Selection Committee. And I was listening to your criteria and I could not help but think to myself, was there any difference? Was there any consideration given to the fact that Care First is a local company? And many of those employees that work there are paying local property taxes, which comes back to Baltimore County. I mean, and my district, Care First, is probably the second-largest employer in my district and probably the second-largest employer pretty close to that in the county.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, yeah. I think when, when we, you know, reviewed the, the, well, I, the committee reviewed the proposals that, you know, based on, you know, the, the technical qualifications and what could be offered, and more importantly, uh, the pricing and, and running out the claims. And I could have Mark Lynn talk a little bit more about that, that, um, it, it was considered, but that the current vendor that's recommended, um, beat them out. Um, and was really the one that, that, based on the proposal, that had shown through. Um, so that's, uh, and I could pass it over to Mark if, if there's any thing that Mark wants to add about, uh, criteria.
I mean, we, I'll, I'll be happy to hear from Mark and, and I'll just add a little more. I mean, we work very hard, uh, at trying to keep the local economy afloat and make sure things are booming here. And so, uh, you know, I see these big contracts going to out-of-state companies. And we have a local company. I'm just wondering, was enough consideration given to the local company? For example, they may not have been the best bidder, but overall, them doing well and paying local income taxes and staying here and employing local people in Baltimore County is very important to us, which pays dividends that, that, I guess, what, I'm wondering if that was taken into consideration. We'll go with Mark and then you, Ms. Rogers. Go ahead, Mark.
Um, we had, there were a lot of different, um, criteria that were included in the R F P. And I, I have to say that the, the team, um, did, was extremely diligent in, in reviewing all of the proposals and scoring them. And if I remember right, um, Cigna was in fact the, the, the leading, um, vote getter um, by all of the, uh, all of the members of the committee. So it was, I mean, it was very clear to the whole group which, um, company had the best overall proposal.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Ms. Rogers, and then you, Councilman Katz.
Sure.
If you don't mind. Sure.
Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I want to just talk a little bit about the, uh, scoring and what is, is typically reviewed as a part of the, uh, what, what is looked for. It's customer service. These are on the technical side. Performance, uh, what the company is offering with respect to, uh, cost savings to our, uh, employees or to the members as, as they're called. And, you know, from the pricing standpoint. And each company, each offerer has to be, uh, vetted against a, uh, standard set of criteria. And one of the things on customer service, it is previous, if, if, if that, uh, entity had previous experience with the county, what wa, and that's where the input from all of the business units of county government, uh, come in. But there is no set aside, if you will, in terms of, uh, it, and Mr. Reed and Mr. Lynn, you could correct me if I'm wrong, based on, you know, the, the feedback, um, in terms of everyone's strengths, uh, or what was seen as a weakness of the, the pro, proposal. Everybody is definitely, um, rated on the same thing. And each of the members, now, each of the, the nine members of the committee rate each of the offerers based on the criteria.
Okay, I, I, I understand. And, uh, I guess my only issue was, when, when you look at the criteria that they were rated on, I guess for me, instead of focusing on who's going to answer the phone within ten seconds versus one minute, I'm thinking about, are we looking at what is the, in the best interest of the economic vitality of Baltimore County? In terms of taxes, employing people, making sure companies here in Baltimore County here succeed. Uh, on that note, I'll just go on to Councilman Katz.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, uh, don't know if, uh, other members of the council have heard that Blue Cross Blue Shield has had, uh, difficulty, uh, with, uh, having a contractual relationship with the Johns Hopkins Health System. And, uh, in fact, there is no contract between the two. So I don't know, uh, what the timelines are, but I don't know if that had any bearing on, uh, the decision of the, uh, your committee to choose, uh, Cigna over, uh, uh, Care First. No, as I said, I don't know what the timelines are, and I'm hoping that Care First will come to an agreement with the Johns Hopkins, uh, Health System. But go ahead.
No, sir, that information was not public, uh, at the time of the, um, vetting of these, these contracts. That was, that had no bearing on the decision uh, of the technical scoring for this R F P.
When, uh, Care First, uh, proposal came in, uh, what does, is it specific in regard to uh, this, the, uh, for instance, of various systems that they have contractual relationships with? Uh, for instance, does it talk about their, uh, Blue Cross, the Johns Hopkins or University of Maryland system, uh? This, is it that specific? Or how does that work?
I would have to defer to Mr. Reed and, um, uh, Becky with respect to specificity like that. Of course, um, bidders will talk about who they serve. Uh, yes, that, that's in, in many kinds of, uh, procurements. Offerers will say who their current, uh, customer base, how many customers, uh, they cover and who their, uh, customers are. That's, that's a typical part of, uh, any proposal.
Can I jump in, Mr. Reed?
Yes, Mr. Chair, yeah.
All right.
Is that okay, Mr. Jones?
Yes.
So that is one part of the, uh, valuation criteria. We, we want to make sure that if, um, a new vendor is chosen, that there is minimal disruption in terms of the healthcare providers people are using. And so we get data, uh, from your current vendors on who their providers are, whether it's Hopkins or Ums or anybody else. And then we look at what the other vendors, um, whether they have those key providers in the network. So that was certain, that's, that's a pretty large part of what we look at.
So if, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield had been chosen as one of the, the options of the, uh, how would this lack of a contract by Hopkins, how, how would that have been handled? Uh, with our employees, let's say, who do, uh, utilize, let's say, who, who do or did utilize Hopkins? Because I'm interested in regard to Cigna as well, you know, basically, how, how do we deal with issues like that?
So I, I think Mark and I, I can jump in here that I think the, um, that would be, in my mind, problematic if, if certain, uh, health insurers didn't, they were, became out of network. Um, and, and again, that's what Mark, with the disruption analysis, you know, what type of providers are most, um, saturated in the certain vendor that we provide? So I mean, it's that, again, that process unfolded later and it's still yet to be determined. But I, I think that would be, uh, potentially problematic.
So if Cigna, yeah, I, I, I have a state health insurance program, so I'm not that familiar with the county. Cigna, I assume, has contracts with, uh, University of Maryland and Hopkins. I assume, okay. And, and, um, so hopefully, that will continue so we won't have the disruption that, uh, could occur if, if we had chosen, uh, Blue Cross Blue Shield at this point. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Katz. Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Uh, so question, uh, related to your point, Mr. Chair, uh, in the procurement process, is there, uh, in this, in the scoring of an R F P, are there any, uh, points awarded for being a local office? And I know, you know, for healthcare, it's complex because you, you want to know who the, if your doctor is, is one of the providers, uh, different than trash hauling, where there might, you know, procurement and that, where just so long as your trash gets picked up and disposed of properly, you know, local preference. Where, uh, trash hauling is just an example. But is there any local preference in scoring in this particular R F P process? Or in other R F P process, you get, uh, more consideration for being local?
Yeah, Councilman, um, the, you know, I think if we look at, you know, kind of going back to, um, local, if we look at the, the Vision Administrator, um, National Vision Administrators, L L C, that they, um, part of what, what came out in, in the, the fact-finding in the beginning was that, you know, uh, Care First as a current vendor uses Davis Vision as a sub-vendor and for things like glassmaking and, 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 uh, eyewear that, you know, it had to be, um, would have to go out of state, like, optometrists and ophthalmologists could only use a certain vendor that was some-vended. What was important of the committee is that kind of, you know, optometrists and ophthalmologists got to use their local vendors, um, which N V A does allow them to contract with them so that we can have that kind of local, um, um, glassmaking and, and lens wear. So that, that, that's something that kind of, you know, although an out-of-state company, we do have more money coming in, in-state, in the local areas in that respect and the vision plans.
Thank you, uh, appreciated. Ms. Rogers and I have talked about, uh,
Yes. And, and that is, that is a, a piece, um, Councilman, uh, Patoka and members of the, the council that we did take a look at because we were not aware, uh, of that provision. And that was one thing that we did request of the, all offerers on the vision, uh, that local businesses that, that grind the lenses, uh, that that would be an expectation so that that's impacting our local economy. Uh, so that business was no longer just going all out of state. That was important to us for the local economy impact, but also for our members. Because if the lenses come back and there's a problem, then you have to send them out of state. So we did take that into consideration. So, uh, Mr. Chair, that was one place that the impact of the local economy was indeed, uh, considered. But there was no overall scoring, if you will, for, um, local preference that is like used, say, in Montgomery County, where they literally have a local preference. A lot of times it's used in, in, um, small business procurements. But in this particular one, we did take a look at, um, that particular business operation and how it impacted the local economy.
Okay. Okay, I, um, I don't want to belabor the point. I guess wish we'd used it on the larger ticket items. Uh, but I, I get it and I'm happy you used it for the glasses. Uh, are there any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Reed. Uh, Mr. Mark and Madam Stacy Rogers, thank you. And now I guess we will move on to, let's see. You can care of that. No, 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 wait a minute. Before we go, did we fit, did we get all of your questions answered, uh, Lauren?
Uh, one moment.
I believe so. From what I can tell, they did. And now I think we're back. Now I think we're back to, um, Mr. Christiane?
Just a moment. Hi, Mr. Christiane.
Hello, how are you?
Fine, how are you, sir?
I'm doing fine, thank you. I want to apologize for this inadequate, uh, computer system that I have, but, uh, I look forward to serving on the board. I've been doing it since two thousand and sixteen. And, um, uh, you had mentioned recently a big-ticket item. One of those big-ticket items are the love of our pets. And that's something that, uh, I think all of Baltimore County cares about, and I would love to continue to serve.
Okay, fantastic. Uh, are there any questions, uh, from the members? No, thank you very much, Mr. Christiane. And, uh, wait a minute.
Thank you, and I.
Oh, oh, wait, 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 Councilwoman Evans.
I just want to say, is the rumor true? Are you really moving to District Three? Because I'm really disappointed.
I'm sorry, but, you know, my wife wants to be next to my eighty-seven-year-old mother-in-law. And I've learned that after thirty-plus years of marriage, I just listen. Comply. Comply.
Well, I'm glad it just wasn't because you love the, the council person representing the third district so much. You felt the need to move there.
We loved him too.
Just kidding, Wade.
Smart man, smart man.
Well, thank you.
All right, thank you very much. That's good. All right, and, uh, let me see. I guess, uh, tell you Kevin, that, uh, the auditor will be reached out to you with a couple of more questions about the healthcare, uh, but we won't, uh, hold everybody up here today. We will move on to page one. Ms. Susan Dubin. Bill sixty twenty-two?
I apologize, my, my mic wasn't working. The council is requesting, the, the administration is requesting approval of Bill sixty twenty-two, which, um, amends the county ethics laws. Every year when the state legislature, um, amends their bills, we need to follow up with a bill that's, um, as, um, restrictive or as inclusive as the state bill. And that's what this, this does. There were two bills introduced during the, um, General Assembly that we are incorporating into, um, the local provisions.
Okay, uh, can you give us a little highlight of what they, what they, well, that's not necessary. I think we all read it. We just two items, correct?
It's, um, yeah, they, they added a few definitions of quasi-governmental entities. They prohibit accepting gifts from certain, um, organizations and prohibit disclosure of certain confidential, uh, information. Um, and they prohibit retaliation against individuals reporting an ethics violation or participating in an ethics investigation. And they had some provisions dealing with, um, uh, University of Maryland Medical System. Required disclosure of certain gifts and, and trade names.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. All right, any questions or comments from the members? Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Dubin. And now we will move on to Ms. DeAndrea Walker, page four.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the council. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation of state funds totaling a hundred and twenty thousand dollars to the bikeways and pedestrian access bulk capital program. These funds will be used for feasibility study, including the preliminary design associated with the trail connection from the current terminus of the Torrey-C Brown Trail in Baltimore County all the way to the Jones Falls Trail in Baltimore City. Uh, the proposed supplemental appropriation, uh, will be used specifically for the feasibility study and it will include a preliminary design, um, of the trail connection. We have selected, um, an on-call consultant to provide these services and we will be submitting a thirty percent, I mean, uh, twenty percent match, which is thirty thousand dollars towards the total cost of the grant, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And I'll take any questions that you may have.
For any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chair, Mr. Quirk.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just really briefly, um, you know, it's, it's great to see this. I mean, anything we do with bikeways and pedestrian access is, uh, fantastic. And I think the Execs Office has made significant progress in this area, uh, especially if you look at the last four or five years. Wonderful to see, even though this is not in my district. And Ms. Walker, we appreciate your work and I'm sure you know where I'm headed on this. But I'll just say River Road, River Road.
Well, I got some good news for you on River Road. We will be calling you soon.
Okay, well, that, that would be wonderful because it's been a long, long time and I look forward to that call. But this is a great program and I'm really super excited to see it. And, uh, I really appreciate the, uh, Execs Office in the focus here. It's exceptional. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Quirk. Any additional questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Councilman Cat?
Yeah, thank you very much. I, uh, the terminus of the Torrey Brown hike bike trail is in my community actually. And, uh, I just wanted to know, will there be any public input sessions, uh, conducted by the consulting firm? Because, you know, people have great ideas, uh, and, and I think that the consulting firm would really benefit from hearing from the public in regard to this, uh, uh, proposal, which, uh, yeah, I'm excited about. So, uh, any, any public input sessions?
Right, typically when we do a feasibility study, we always get public comments.
Good.
I don't have the, I don't have the schedule just yet because it hasn't, this hasn't been approved for me to accept it just yet. But I'm more than sure we will have some public comment associated with this process.
I have a mailing list of thirty-two thousand people. So, uh, I would like to have that information so that I can let my constituents know when there's a hearing because I know that they'll want to participate. And thank you, I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, and, uh, Councilman Marks?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And, um, one of my first, uh, pieces of legislation in two thousand and eleven with Councilman Quirk was to create the Baltimore County Pedestrian and Bicycle Advisory Committee. And I, I second what Councilman Quirk said, we've made a lot of progress. I appreciate that. Uh, I also appreciate this trail, which I have used many, many times and think this is a good, um, a good expenditure. But I, I do want to bring up the Northeast Trail, which, uh, Councilwoman Bevins and I, uh, first raised as a project more than eleven years ago. We have, in eleven years, this trail should largely have been finished, particularly the public connections. There's some connections to a development that are still getting built. But, you know, it's, it's frustrating to me that we haven't been able to obtain the state funding. And we've made very little progress beyond the trail next to Perry Hall High School. So I just want to please put that on your radar. This is a superb regional trail that has been on the books. It's not something new. And, um, whatever we can to get this finished, I would certainly appreciate it.
Understood.
Any additional questions or comments from the members?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Batoka?
Um, thank you. Uh, so Ms. Walker, last week at the Pikeville-Greenspring Community Coalition Meeting, uh, former Deputy Planning Director Yuri Avan and Jaren Shaw, who's a bike advocate, bicycling advocate, um, presented a PowerPoint presentation on the complete streets of Green Summit Road, uh, from Greenspring Avenue where Quarry Lake is to Falls Road. And they did, uh, really a fantastic, an outstanding job on envisioning what Green Summit Road ought to look like as a complete street with buffers and, and bikeways. And, um, they, uh, the intent is to connect it to Lake Roland and then connect Lake Roland to, to, to Northern County. And so it, at the end of the meeting, I said, Councilman, how do we get this in the budget? And so, uh, you know, I said, well, show up in January. County Executive will have a budget town hall meeting presented. Try to get ahold of, uh, the Director of DPWT and, uh, now start, you know, share this presentation. And, uh, it's interesting that we have supplemental state funds. And so I just wanted to put this out there that as we re-envision Green Summit Road, which I think is in the, in the books in the capital budget for complete streets, that we look at it with the lens of how do we increase, um, bicycle, um, access for bicyclists, uh, and especially as, uh, as we're able to connect the quarry to, um, to Lake Roland and then to the north parts of the county, I think with bicycling and complete streets. You know, we can do it in a linear fashion, fashion, um, and do one link at a time. You know, and unfortunately, um, I guess eight years ago, we decided in terms of mass transit, not to do, uh, an east-west linkage in, in terms of the, the red line. And so that was a big mistake. And I think even for, uh, moving by bicycle or any complete streets, I think we really have to keep in mind that the more, uh, we can do one link at a time on linear style projects, we should take advantage of that and not make the mistakes the governor made eight years ago with the red line. So you'll probably be hearing more of that from Yuri Avan and Jaren Shaw and the Pikeville-Greenspring Coalition. And, uh, um, so look forward to the town hall meetings. I think they start in January and then, uh, hopefully we'll get this into that, uh, act pedestrian access bicycling bulk account that, uh, you referred to.
Okay. I look forward to it.
Thank you.
Well, are there any additional questions or comments? Ms. Ms. Walker, I think it's a great idea connecting those trails. Clearly it would be a benefit to our citizens as well as the citizens of Baltimore City who use those trails. And unlike my colleagues, I am not going to talk about the Red Run Trail connecting it to the metro center. I'm not going to do that today. I'm not going to do that. I'm not going to take their time and talk about that at this particular time. I will talk to you offline at another time. Are there any additional questions or comments from the members?
Talking about it now.
Oh, no, I'm not talking about it. No way, uh, no way. All right. Thank you very much, Ms. Walker. We thank you so much for all the things you do for Baltimore County. And, uh, next we will move on to page seven, Mr. Lawrence Richardson, uh, Local Health Department Disparities Fund.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. The administration is requesting a supplemental appropriation, an amount of three hundred and ninety-five thousand, three hundred and seventy-three dollars. This was for our local health, uh, department disparity funding. Uh, the funding will be used for COVID nineteen, uh, related disparities within the community to help expand and enhance the current health programs and to, um, connect and directly link, uh, community with prevention and mitigation of the most prominent chronic diseases as they relate to, uh, COVID nineteen and supporting, uh, the infrastructure and staffing of additional, uh, support for this program.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the members?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Cat?
Yes, uh, just a quick question. So what, uh, you're saying is that you're going to be reaching out to, uh, communities where there may be overweight people like myself or people with, uh, where there's a prevalence of diabetes? Because if those individuals were to get COVID, the consequences could be more severe than other populations. Is that, is that what you're talking about?
Well, partially, yes. Uh, yes, Councilman, uh, and it's also just to address, uh, the health disparities that were found in, uh, many of the ethnic minority populations in rural communities within the county also. A lot of the hard to reach, this is, this funding is for those communities as well.
How, how do you reach them? Cause this, this is very important, what it is that you're trying to do here. And, and how do you reach this population?
So the, the funding actually is going to support, uh, we have community health workers who actually go out into the community and canvass the community. Uh, we also utilize some of our, uh, information from our BC Stat team to determine some of the areas where we had low testing and low, uh, vaccination levels to go out and reach, reach out to the communities in general, uh, to encourage them for both testing and vaccination.
And I, I'm certain that you utilize the senior centers and, and, uh, in, in this goal to reach the, uh, uh, populations that don't have the coverage that they need.
Correct. We, we use, uh, several community partners, including our, um, Department of Aging.
Okay, good. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councilman Cat. Any additional questions or comments from the members? Okay, uh, Mr. Richardson, you know, you, when you first said health disparities, I could, first thing I thought of was Care First. Inside joke, forget about it. Catch it on the way home. Next we'll move on to, uh, page ten, sixty-three, Bill sixty-three twenty-two, Mr. Richardson?
Yes, Bill sixty-three twenty-two is another supplemental appropriation in the amount of a hundred and forty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars. This is for our, uh, tobacco, diabetes and chronic disease prevention and management initiatives grant. Uh, the grant will be used to support, uh, the funding of community and faith-based organizations, organizations to conduct, um, outreach and education to the community and help with media messaging, um, around, uh, weight management. Uh, in specific, the taking off the pound sensibility program. Uh, also will be assistance for community members for transportation, uh, to attend these meetings. Um, and also to help with smoking cessation programs.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Very good stuff, very good stuff. Any questions or comments? Councilman Cat?
Yeah, very, uh, I would hope, Mr. Richardson, that the previous, uh, uh, funds from the state and these funds, that, uh, it sounds as though, uh, the people that will be programs could work together, coordinate?
Yeah, actually, yes. And, and actually, this funding is going to our, uh, community health programs. So it's actually within one bureau within the Health Department. So they do work very closely together and they're addressing the same populations that you, as you mentioned earlier.
Good, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Okay, we'll move right along to, uh, page thirteen. Mr. Richardson?
Yes, so this is, uh, Bill sixty-four twenty-two is another supplemental appropriation. Uh, the total amount is one million, two hundred and forty-five thousand and ninety dollars. This is actually a combination of three grants that make up our HIV case management programs. Uh, that funding includes our AIDS case management, uh, funding, which helps with coordination of staff for all of our HIV programs, uh, within the county. Uh, the department uses this funding to help coordinate services and organize a continuous quality improvement, uh, for services and care identified by the Maryland Department of Health for our, um, Rhine White eligible, uh, HIV, uh, clients. The second portion of the funding is for our Rhine White Part B. And this provides case management service to HIV-positive county residents also. But within, um, relations to medical and psychiatric needs, specifically it will support the salaries of social workers, uh, nursing assistants and part-time human services associates. The third component of this funding is for our, uh, Rhine White Part B support services, which provide, uh, psychosocial support services through individual and group, uh, counseling sessions, housing services and other support services, including assistance with rent, transportation and food vouchers. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Any questions or comments from the members?
Mr. Chairman, sorry, but I do have
Okay, Councilman Cat?
Yeah, I, uh, uh, listening to this particular program, it, uh, makes me, you know, I think of the program that the county has for individuals who, uh, were incarcerated and released and the healthcare that, uh, we provide them, the assistance that we provide them. Is there coordination between that program and, and also And, and also the state of Maryland has it as well, where individuals are released from. Yeah, from incarceration. So are these programs coordinated? So that, you know, we can get these services to everyone who's, who's in need.
So this, so Councilman, this particular funding is for our Ryan White. Funding, which is all related to AIDS, AIDS management.
I understand.
But there, there are all components within this support services that would provide linkages to anyone from the community that is suffering from AIDS.
But do you, do you communicate is what I'm asking? Will they be communicating with the programs where. Individuals are released from incarceration. And who do suffer from AIDS or, you know, need treatments whatsoever. That, that's what I mean.
I'm not sure of that particular question, but I will definitely find out and then get back in touch with you to let you answer that.
And, and please try to encourage this kind of cooperation. It, it doesn't make much sense for us to be working down two tracks if we can. Bring them together and have everybody working together to provide these critical services. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Let me just thank you, Mr. Richardson, and as well as our wonderful, wonderful Dr. Branch. And all the members of the Baltimore County Health Department. This is just another reminder. That, you know, we've been inundated and so focused on. COVID and monkeypox. And we should never forget that our health department is on the front line. Bringing out health, improving health incomes for, as it relates to AIDS, hepatitis. Children's, keeping kids from smoking. You name it. Our health department is there. Working hard, trying to keep all of us healthy and safe. And it's so easy for us to forget about all the other things that the Health Department has been doing. But they've been doing all of these things in addition to the new COVID and monkeypox. They've continued to do all the other things that has been so important to the citizens of Baltimore County. And we should, you know, continue to be in your debt and gratitude and give you as much praise and gratitude as we can because you're doing a wonderful job. Please tell Dr. Branch, we, we're all collectively are very impressed with him and all of his staff.
I will pass that along. And as Dr. Branch would say, HHS is on the job.
On the job. And he would say it well, believe me. All right, now we'll move on to, let's see, Mr. Marks. Page nineteen.
I should just say, repeat, I think.
Repeat.
This is the third time we've considered this bill. This is a bill that would prohibit electronic signage outside the urban real demarcation line. The difference is that this version grandfather's in. Those who have received permits for the enactment of the legislation. That's it.
Councilman Marks. I guess my only thing is. Why don't you do one of two things? That would be very helpful. Number one. Talk to Plan, I mean, P A I. And try to come up with something. Some, some reasonable standard that we can utilize as it relates to electronic copy signs. For example, they don't have to be. You know, some animation. Or some full-screen movie. But some reasonable amount of electronic is, is probably okay in today's time. I mean, I heard it said the other day, this is a sign of the times. In two thousand and twenty-two, you're going to buy a sign that you, that you would have to go outside and change the copy. Is sort of ridiculous. I don't care where you are in Baltimore County. And I think that we could come up with something that, that the church, the synagogue, whoever. If they wanted to have a sign with a small, be able to change the word, the meeting is this Thursday, not Friday. School is letting out on Tuesday at two o'clock, something to notify the public. Because the reality is, you can talk about emails, you can talk about letters home. Sometimes parents need to drive past school and see the sign to know what's going on because they're so busy. And it's just, and, and today's modern times, it's just hard for me to think that we would have. A prohibition on every sign with any electronic changeable copy. That's my two cents. You don't have to say anything. Any additional questions or comments from the members? All right. We've done that. And all right, I think we have a couple of speakers, right?
Yes, Mr. Chair, we only have one speaker for this item this evening. Bruce Morgan. And let me get Mr. Morgan on here.
Can you hear? Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Yeah, great. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the council. I'm Bruce Morgan. I'm a resident of Kingsville. I'm an active board member at Greater Kingsville Civic Association. I, I spoke to you all last month. With regards to this same piece of code and legislation. We're, I'm in favor of sixty-five twenty-two. I sent you all an email last month from my neighbors here at Longfield. We had twenty-two, twenty-two neighbors out of forty houses that. Still support this position of, of no electronic, no electronic changeable signs outside of the Urkel. I think there's, there's precedent for this. It's been fifteen years that they basically have supported that position. And I think a lot of this has to do with a couple of major items. It's, this is a very dangerous distraction to drivers. And, and if any of you had gone up Philadelphia Road, I think maybe, you know, three, four, five months ago. By bricks and sticks, I think it was called. I mean, you come over the hill and you're, you're just completely blinded by these signs. And in addition to that, I think you're talking about putting these signs on rural roadways where you have residential neighbors that are in immediate. Proximity to these, and it's offensive to them. It lends a carnival atmosphere to, to our otherwise beautiful rural roadways. So, you know, while saying that we're in favor of sixty-five twenty-two. We're also in favor of the grandfathering portion of, of that bill. But I also think that these, the signs that had been permitted. Would be, would fall under that grandfathering that we would be in favor of. But I think those signs need to be the ones that are already existing, not any new ones, but ones that are already existing. Should be, as I think was just mentioned, you know, muted in some way. No animation, maybe changed once a day. And again, it's just because these, these things become a distraction. And they become offensive to the neighbors, you know, whether you've got this flashing stuff going on across the street. I think it's crazy. But, you know, there is a precedence for this. I think at the last council meeting, there was a. There was someone that testified with David regarding the history of this precedent, which has held all this period of time. I mean, I, I reject the idea that, you know, that we need these electronic changeable signs and out on rural roadways to, to alert. Drivers to some event or something that's going on. I think most of the people that are interested in those establishments. Be it, whether it's volunteer fire companies or, or schools or whatever, they're all, they're, they're, they're pretty well aware of what's coming up or what's going on. So I don't think the signs are necessary. They're a distraction and they're dangerous. But thanks for listening to me.
Thank you very mu- very much for your call.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for the speaker.
Councilman Ketch.
Yes, thank you very much for your testimony. I, I just have. You're saying that. You have a concern about signs that change. However, if they change once a day, you don't have a problem. And also you're talking about the brightness of the signs. If there were restrictions as to how bright they can be, then you wouldn't have a problem with it?
I don't, I wouldn't have a problem with it with respect to the signs that already exist.
Okay, so, but. If, okay, so as part of the bill. You would not then support allowing changeable signs that were restricted to changing once a, once a day. And where the brightness factor was controlled, you would not support that, correct?
I, I think if I follow your question, yeah, I, I, I'd be in support of, of a, a muting of signs that are already in existence. I'm, I'm still, I'm still not in favor of any new signs.
Gotcha.
Not in favor of any new signs.
And, and you want to restrict the, you, you would like to see signs that already are, that would be grandfathered in. You'd like to see them only change their copy once a day. Is, is that what you're, you're saying?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. No scrolling and flashing and things like that because we frankly, we, we have this period, this time period now where you're talking about through October seventeenth. And we don't know if people will be rushing to get, try to get sign permits prior to October seventeenth. And I'd like to see that, that there are some restrictions on that so that we don't end up with a bunch of changeable copy signs that are, you know, flashing and changing and animations and all this kind of stuff.
I, I don't think a permit would be issued that fast. I really don't, but because we're voting on the bill from now, so don't, don't be concerned.
Yeah, okay, we'll see.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you for the question.
Okay, any additional questions or comments? I will, I'll guess add a little bit more from my soapbox. Number one, we certainly appreciate the caller and we certainly appreciate his point of view. I would just add that we have eight hundred and fifty-five thousand citizens of Baltimore County. And it's been often told to me, a business without a sign is a sign without business. And no one wants to see how rural roadways where I live. Turned into Las Vegas Strip. However. A one hundred percent prohibition to me is a bit much. Because if I owned a business and I wanted to put up a sign. I would probably be hard pressed to put up a sign that doesn't have some electronics on. Every gas station I know has the ability to change the gas prices and not go out there like the old days and change the numbers on the sign. But that's my point of view.
Councilman Jones.
This enough. And one more thing, Councilman Marks, one more thing, one more thing.
I would.
This is my, this is my one more part of my soapbox. I believe in freedom and property rights. And I guess love it when certain people want to impose their views on everybody else. And if this was for Kingsville, God bless you, heaven in Kingsville. But when you want to talk about the outside of the Urkel on Liberty Road, outside of the Urkel on Rice's Town Road, outside of the Urkel where I live, out here on Hermwood Road. I just have issues. That's my two cents. Go right ahead, Councilman Marks.
I, I, I would say that I respect the property rights also of those people who have homes in those areas and who have. Invested a lot of money maintaining those homes and want to stay in a, a place marked by character and beauty. My question to you then, the Councilman Jones, following your, your, your questioning about the, your comments about a business that doesn't have a sign, can't stay in business, then how do all these companies that. Are remote, that are online, how do they thrive? I mean, how do they get customers? And it's the point I made earlier, we are in a different place than we were fifteen years ago. Signs are not the determinant of if a business or an institution or a school is going to be successful. I really think social media plays a role here. And the signs aren't fundamental to the success of those institutions. But I respect your opinion, Councilman.
Thank you, Councilman Marks. I certainly respect your opinion as well.
You're always very thoughtful and I always love that about you, so.
I try to do my best and so do you.
Thank you.
Any questions? Or comments? It's been a wonderful day. I think that's it. Do we have any more speakers?
We have one more item, Mr. Chairman.
One more item?
Thank you, Boswick.
Oh, you're right, you're right, you're right. We have one more item, Middle River Park. Ms. Beavens.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is probably the. Second most important piece of property in the sixth district. And it's been studied and looked at for many, many years. And we're talking about the old Lafarge Mining Company, which is located at Earl's Road and Ebenezer. And the PUD proposal, well, first let me tell you, it's four hundred acres for those of you that don't know. It's over, it's over four hundred acres. And for many decades, it was mined. But it hasn't been mined since two thousand and nineteen. And since then, it's just been taking in fill to fill in the big craters on the, the property. I'd like to, if you don't mind indulging me, I'd like to go over a few bullets with you of why this is such an important piece of property and how the community's been involved. And just a little bit of background on it. So again, in two thousand and nineteen, the mining came to an end and Lafarge is now in a fill process. And response only to the community with concerns about the development of this property and the Essex Middle River Civic Council. I filed to downzone the property in two thousand and twenty during a CZMP process. And why I did that and I downzoned it to an R C eight. It's on record that I did this just as a placeholder. For the next couple of years to show the community that we were all going to work together on this property since it was so important, especially for economic development. I immediately, I'd reached out to the county executive's office, I worked with the administration, and we put a work group together, together to actually study the property. And evaluate really future development for this four hundred acres. And that included residents, area business owners, county agencies. And we met for months to discuss the future of this property. Some was during pre-COVID, some happened during COVID, but we continued to meet. I guess the ultimate, ultimate report of the work group identified a number of different potential scenarios and uses for the property. And. Some included industrial logistics uses and some for public use. I have been advocating for a school, some called a trade school, I'm going to call it a school of the future. Because I think it's going to have curriculum that no other schools have in Baltimore County. And this is a really special time for Eastern Baltimore County, especially the Middle River area to have a school like this. And let me just add that I had already. Had received a school site from St. John's property when they were doing greenlit on the north side of Ebenezer Road, but come to find out it wasn't totally buildable. So you can imagine how discouraged I was over that. So as soon as we were talking about Lafarge and this huge piece of property. I said, you know, we're going to get the school this time because it's good, buildable land. So. Over two hundred acres, that's almost half the size of the property. Is being donated by Lafarge to Baltimore County. Two hundred acres. And I know any of my colleagues, if they had a four hundred piece of property. And the developer agreed to over two hundred acres to be donated to the property. You all would be very, very happy, as I was. And on that two hundred acres will be this school of the future. And all that property is mostly buildable. It's not like they're just donating us a bunch of wetlands. That's, couldn't be further from the truth. And of course, you know, the potential for taxes and for uses and for the school, I mean, it's kind of unlimited. Some say that I am rushing this application. And some say I shouldn't even be putting in the application for the PUD because my term is coming to an end because I decided to retire. because my term is coming to an end because I decided to retire. And that the future of this property should be left up to my predecessor, which actually will be David Marks because this is now part of the fifth district instead of the sixth district. And I say, couldn't be further from the truth. This project is an accumulation of three years of effort to identify the appropriate uses for the development of this property. And the council should support this because it's been consistent with decades-long zoning that have already existed. Some may say, well, why can't it just be 400 acres of open space for the community? Well, that can't happen because it's privately owned by Lafarge. They're not selling the property. They're not interested in selling the property to the county. They're not selling it to another developer. They are redeveloping it themselves. They are not interested in selling it to the county. And what I think is very interesting, back in 2015, Economic Development reached out to the Essex Middle River Civic Council and all the communities and wanted to put this large piece of property in the enterprise zone. And we all know the enterprise zone brings tax initiatives and incentives to businesses. And we actually enlarged that area to include Lafarge. And that was supported wholeheartedly by the Essex Middle River Civic Council and those almost 20-some communities that fall under that umbrella group. You can't have competing, let's just call it zoning on this property. You can't have, you can't be trying to preserve the land and also have the enterprise, yeah, enterprise zone. Can't, can't be both, got to be one or the other. And Lafarge has chosen as a private company to stay in the enterprise zone to receive those tax benefits. I would also like to point out that in May, the county council passed Resolution 2422 that would then also extend water and sewer over to that property. So this is a very, very important piece of property that has been worked on for many years. And it's very important for the health of Baltimore County and economic development. So 200 acres preserved, including a school site and then some kind of economic growth on the other 100-plus acres, which would probably include a logistics center. And that's really what people are looking for now due to e-commerce. And I already have several in the district and I'm sure all of you probably have logistics centers in your districts as well. So I'm really hoping that my colleagues will support this. There are a couple of communities outside of this area that aren't supporting it. And I say what's important is that the communities that surround this piece of property, they were the ones that were included in the workforce that we had, you know, studying this property. And, you know, we don't want something later on that's going to be so detrimental with traffic. And the county already understands the that they, they're going to have to make an investment in the infrastructure down there and improvements for Earl's Road and Ebenezer Road. And I'm happy to finally announce the right turn lane is happening at Ebenezer Road. It's starting this week and that should take some of the congestion out of that area. So I think that's about it. It's an enterprise zone and it's been studied for three years. So I really hope that you'll support this PUD.
Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Councilman, I mean, Councilwoman. We certainly appreciate your comments and all your hard work on this issue. And we have a comment from, or question from Councilman Catch.
Yeah, thank, thank you very much, Councilwoman Beavons. I appreciate so much your efforts to bring a vocational-type high school to Baltimore County. It is so vitally needed. And I really appreciate your efforts so much. I have a question for Mr. Boswick. Is there any way that the council can put restrictions on the land proposed for this vocational school? So that should the Board of Education get this property, that they can't then turn around and build whatever they want on it? That they would in essence have to do a vocational-type school on that property and not just a regular high school or middle school or elementary school?
Mr. Catch, whatever the resolution would say related to that is what would control. So, and I would defer to Mrs. Beavons on the exact, the exact agreement that is, isn't, that that is contained in that.
Is it a written agreement? I have concerns that the school system may have different ideas, you know, five years, 10 years from now. And I'm just so interested in this vocational-type school that I would hate to see that happen.
Right. And that's a good point, Councilman Catch, and I'm glad you brought it up. And I really think probably already the language should be changed in this resolution because I don't like it called a trade school because that's not what it's going to be. It's not going to be a trade school. And I have only had conversations with Dr. Williams, you know, in meetings. But I've had very in-depth conversations with Dr. Curt Nidus and how what studies would be at this school, which then they could go right from this school already with credits and then go to CCBC and have a continued education there as well. So I think you're right. I think it has to be worded exactly like that. I know that the school system has already, you know, you know, it's been years that we've been fighting over what schools get built first and what schools will have additions put on or will be raised completely. And it's probably not the best time to say, hey, I need $40 million for school. But half the battle is won by having the land designated and I'm really super excited about that. And, you know, not having any, we've had Eastern Boat Tech, which is a wonderful school. And then we have Carver and we have Sowers down in Dundalk. So it would be so beneficial to this area. And, and keeping in mind with the boating industry and the marine industry and the 200 miles of waterfront in Eastern Baltimore County, the farms that we still have existing between the sixth, the seventh, the third and the second district would be instrumental to the school as well. So that's a very good point. And we could probably, yeah, we're going to have to work on that, Mr. Boswick, because I want to make sure that that can't happen because we don't want somebody else. There could be a different superintendent, there could be other people, another county executive, another superintendent that would say, no, we need a high school instead. And that is not the mission. The mission is to have something special in Eastern Baltimore County that is going to enhance students.
Yes, ma'am. We can work on that language and try to tighten it up.
Yeah, make it tight, very tight. And, yeah, thank you.
Yeah, appreciate that.
Thank you. Any additional questions or comments from the members? I know we have several speakers. Okay. Spell Castro, I guess we'll come up with our first speaker. I was going to just add something to the conversation. Was down at the community college when they were receiving a $600,000 grant from a company that represents manufacturers. And I was very happy to see, I want to say our kids was, and the kids from Owens Mills High School was there. I want to say a part of the tech program or I forget the name of the program. But I was really happy to see kids from Owens Mills High School sitting there at the community college learning how to do some manufacturing and how to program robots and things of that nature. But Miss Spell Castro, I guess we're going with our first speaker.
Certainly, Mr. Chair, our first speaker this evening is balloon, you're a panelist, you may begin your testimony. You're muted.
Okay, I am muted still. Am I muted now?
Now, we can hear you now.
Thank you very much. Good evening, I guess it is at this point, Chairman Jones and member of the council. Ms. Beavons gave a very thorough explanation of why we're here this evening on this. But I am speaking on behalf of the applicant in favor of the B.C. Middle River Park planning and development. And as Ms. Beavons mentioned, this property has a long history of institutional use. Essentially, the property was industrial, sorry, industrial. Industrially zoned from 1945 through the 2020 CZMP. And then for 75 years under that zoning, the property was operated as a sand and gravel mine. As Ms. Beavons mentioned, it was downzoned in 2020 and then it was subjected to the work group evaluation that was conducted over the period of 2020 through, and it just concluded at the beginning of this year. I think there was some delay due to COVID. Essentially, in the PUD application, we're seeking to return the property to its previous industrial zoning by way of the application. Of the 415 acres, 400 of it would be subjected to the PUD. Although a portion of that 15 acres would still be dedicated to the county. It's just not within the urban rural demarcation line, so it cannot be subject to the PUD, but it still would be usable to the county. On the east side of the property, that's the property that is proposed to be dedicated to the county. It's about 221 acres that would be dedicated to the county. Access to that would be to Ebenezer Road. And then the western portion of the property that abuts Earl's Road is the portion that the applicant is proposing to develop. So on that 194 plus or minus acres, they're proposing to do industrial office logistic-type uses. They would like to have the flexibility to have employment-intensive uses similar to the definition that is in the MD-43. That just gives them a little bit of flexibility in terms of those uses. And they would also like to have some auxiliary commercial uses to have some supporting uses for the workers within the park. As Ms. Beavons mentioned, under the RC8 zoning, we would have to use the PUD process in order to allow this project to move forward. Just wanted to point out that this application was filed in May of 2022. So this isn't a last-minute process that we're doing, you know, right here in September, moving into October. We have been working on this project all year. So the application has proceeded through the process. We've received input from the community, from the agencies, from the community. The proposal to dedicate more than half the property was well-received. But as Ms. Beavons mentioned, some people were a little bit more greedy and want the whole property. But that is not reasonable, obviously, in the owner's opinion. There are differing opinions about what uses should go on the property. Some people have mentioned residential as being an option, but that is not the proposal for you, before you today. The proposal today is just for the industrial-type uses. And again, for people who say this project should be delayed, we heard some of that at the, at the community meeting. As Ms. Beavons mentioned, this project has been, it's not just this past couple of months. From the owner's perspective, they lost the zoning in 2020. They were put through the work group with others talking about how they should use their property. And this is how they see the best use of the property at this point in time while giving, you know, the concession of giving 200-plus acres to the county. The proposal is a good compromise. The public obviously ends up, the county ends up with, with, you know, something very beneficial. It's consistent with the prior industrial zoning. It's consistent with the current master plan. And as Ms. Beavons mentioned, it's consistent with the, the location in the Chesapeake Enterprise Zone, which was intended to attract business investment and job creation. So for all these reasons, we would ask that you support Resolution 3922. And with respect to, you know, the vocational school and having that designated in any way we can help with that in terms of, you know, having language in the resolution, that's fine with us. Obviously, it's the county sort of protecting itself against, you know, the Board of Education. So we're fine with that. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Thank you very much. Ms. Malone, what sort of transportation improvements will the owner be doing above and beyond what might be normally required for a project like this?
Well, the entire western portion of the property abuts Earl's Road, so there would be expected improvements along Earl's Road. There has been concern raised by the adjacent crossroads development about the utilization of their connection through to MD-43. So we have agreed to explore other alternatives for accessing the property. We don't intend to take access through to Ebenezer. The county would come out on Ebenezer Road. The county portion would come out on Ebenezer Road, not the development. So, and the property does not have much road frontage on Ebenezer. So I would think that there wouldn't be significant improvements up on Ebenezer, but certainly on Earl's Road.
Will the developer have to pay impact fees, do you know?
Good question. I have not looked at that, but I'd have to look at that. I know there were exemptions and I'm not aware of any exemptions at this point in time, but I would look at that and can get you the answer to that question.
Okay, thank you very much.
Sure.
Thank you, Ms. Malone. Ms. Spell Castro, next speaker, please.
Robert Bendler. Mr. Bendler, you are now a panelist. You may begin your testimony. You have to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you very much.
You can turn your camera on if you like.
Well, since I figured out how to do that, I'll get my daughter. Can you see me now?
There we go.
Okay, thank you very much. First, I'd like to say thank you to Kathy Beavons for her years of service to the Essex Middle River area. It's unfortunate that we don't agree on this particular issue, but we have agreed on a number of things that have been very beneficial. So I thank Kathy Beavons for that. And with that said, I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Robert Bendler. I am the president of the Essex Middle River Civic Council, which, as Kathy mentioned, is an umbrella group representing about 18 community associations in the Middle River and Essex area. We are opposed to this resolution. Quite frankly, I sent a letter to all council people that a week ago that outlined the rationale for our, our concern and our position. I won't read the letter, but I'd like to hit some of the highlights from my classes. One of the concerns we have is that we believe this PUD resolution is premature. The quarry is still in the reclamation process. They have somewhere between two and five years left before they'll complete the restoration. And then that restoration has to be approved by the state of Maryland. There are some serious concerns that have been raised about the field dirt that's been used for that purpose. And that needs to be further evaluated by the state. And they will do so when they do their evaluation of the final reclamation project. I might say that the county Department of Environmental Protection and Sustainability cannot even start their assessment of the property until after the state has cleared it, which will be, like I say, anywhere from probably three to seven years before that happens. If the county needs to do an assessment to determine what areas are actually buildable and what areas may have wetlands, might have residual contamination and other areas, other things that they would identify when they're trying to determine what is a buildable area. As far as the trade school, the civic council strongly supports Kathy Beavons's efforts to bring that trade school to Eastern Baltimore County. Can it be on this site? Absolutely. And we support that. And it can be even if it remained RC8, which it currently is. But I think that there's a lot of, there's a need for a lot more deliberation based on available information, which will be coming to you all in the very near future. You've got the 2030 master plan that'll be before you in a matter of months. That plan will replace the outdated 2020 master plan. And that 2020 plan, 2020 plans are all for that immediate area has been changed dramatically because of Greenley. And consequently, this Lafarge usage needs to be reexamined. The study committee that Mrs. Beavins mentioned did work diligently to determine what were some of the appropriate uses for it. But quite frankly, they came up with three scenarios. And this represents one of those. That report was submitted to the planning department and hopefully to the planning board so they could look at the viability of all three options. Kathy is right that the Enterprise Zone was applied. That may or may not have been a mistake, but the fact is the civic council also at one point recommended that the Rural Legacy Program be applied to this property. Point is, the master plan should determine which of those is applicable. And once the master plan is done, there's plenty of time to change the zoning on this property to do whatever is appropriate. And that next, that way, the means to do that should be the comprehensive zoning map process. It's an open, well-betted process, and you all are in the driver's seat. You're in the driver's seat when it comes to the master plan. You're in the driver's seat when it comes to the CZMP. So it will be you that makes the final decision. There's no need to make that decision now. The site was rezoned less than, what, two and a half years ago, right? I hate to disagree with Councilwoman Beavins, but there is no such thing as temporary zoning. And if it was considered to be just temporary, I assume that it would be temporary based on what the master plan eventually came forward with, as well as the opportunity to use the next CZMP. I cannot hear you.
All right, if you could wrap up your comments, you're over the time limit.
I would like a little more time since the last speaker had over five minutes, so.
Sir, you're at five minutes and six seconds. We also let you go over as well.
I'm sorry.
I already insinuated with that.
Because I represent a number of communities. The new master plan I mentioned is coming up. So in fairness, I believe the new council person should be given the courtesy of having an opportunity to input on this decision before an irreversible PUD is approved. If this PUD is approved at the next session, it cannot be changed by the next council person. That's not right. And let me sum up by saying, there is no urgency, and therefore, we encourage the county council to let the 2030 master plan be completed. Consider its findings and guidance, and utilize the CZMP to identify the appropriate zoning for the appropriate use of this property. And consider the environmental assessments of the state and the county professionals, and give the new council representative the courtesy to make input on this matter, which is of great concern to his constituency. There being no immediate need for this PUD and so many unresolved issues, we respectfully request that the council reject this PUD or this PUD resolution or table it for future for future consideration, but not at this next meeting. So thank you very much for your indulgences. I'm sorry I went over. But it's a bad habit I have of talking too much, I guess. But thank you.
Next speaker, Ms. Fel Castro.
Mr. Chairman, can I add something real quick while everything's fresh in everybody's mind?
Yes.
When I changed the zoning, I raised the issue myself. And when I raised the zoning from the manufacturing down to the RCA, it wasn't a temporary zoning. I called it a placeholder because the community was so whooped up and excited about like, oh, my gosh, what can happen at that property? What can happen at that property? And I said, we're going to slow the roll, and in good faith, I'm going to downzone it. We're going to put a place, you know, it's just a placeholder until we can work with this group. So that's the first thing I want to clear up. The Rural Legacy Plan cannot be placed on private property without the owner's consent. And the owner does not want to be in the Rural Legacy Program. So when the community says, we'd like to have that placed on the property, that's already been a discussion with the owner, and they're not they're resistant to that. They don't want to be a part of that because, again, they are in the Enterprise Zone, and they would like to receive those incentives and build business there. I just wanted to put clarity on that. But I appreciate Mr. Bendler, as we've been friends a long time, way before I was elected, and he's a great community leader. And this is one that we just don't agree on, and that's okay.
Councilwoman Beavins, I remember you saying those words about the placeholder and everything else.
Yeah, yeah.
Mr. Chairman? Wait a minute. One second, Councilman Catch, I apologize. Was it you, Councilman Batoka?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Councilwoman Beavins and Councilman Catch for giving me an element. I just wanted to say to Mr. Bendler first, it's great to see you, Mr. Bendler Bob. I've known you for a long time. I've known you to be a very thoughtful person. I don't think that you do things, you don't really shoot from the hip. You kind of are very thoughtful and been serving the community in a positive way for a long time. So appreciate you speaking tonight and appreciate all the thought that you've given to the, to this, to the Lafarge property and sharing it with all the members. I know that you've done it here as testimony. You and I have spoken on the phone and also what you've sent to the council. And just thank you for your service to the community, both when you were Deputy Director of Planning, Deputy Director of Wreck and Parks, and also for what you've done in your so-called retirement, working for the community over the past many years. So thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Batoka. Councilman Catch, I apologize, you're up, sir.
No problem. Thank you very much. Just a quick question for Mr. Bostwick. Okay, we are going to go to a new council in December. In this particular situation, should the community and Lafarge come to some agreement that's slightly different or is different from the PUD that we have in front of us? Despite the fact there's going to be a new council, would the council members still be able to amend the PUD that is passed by a previous council?
It's a bit complicated. About 10 or 11, about 11 years ago, the council revised the PUD statute to deal with the situation that we could have been in, in this, in this, meaning a council member potentially putting in a resolution, a PUD resolution, and then the other, another council person kind of inheriting it. And so what the council did was it put in language that said if it's, that if it's within 60 days of the end of a council member's term, and they put in a resolution for a PUD, the next council person who takes over would have 60 days from the time that they take office to either rescind or modify that PUD. That's not the case here because if this is voted on on Monday, it would be more than 60 days before the November election. However, to your exact point, once, if this PUD resolution passed, there would be a period of time after the first community input meeting that a council member, that the council member would be able to potentially amend the PUD. And that is, that is in the law.
Okay, I must admit you confused me a little bit. Okay, but the question, the answer is after a public input session, then the council member who represents that district at the time could then amend the resolution or rescind it? Is that what you said?
It cannot be rescinded, however.
But it can be amended.
Right, and I can, under 32, 4242 D3 2, I'm sorry, D3 double I, subparagraph 2, it says the county council, and again, this is after a resolution has been passed, a PUD resolution. It says the county council may introduce a resolution that amends or modifies a resolution adopted under paragraphs 1 and 2 of this subsection at any time within 90 days after the conclusion of the community input meeting.
Okay, and the, okay, thank you very much. Now I understand.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
May I ask, Ms. Rogers, or if anyone is on from planning, the status of the master plan? When are we going to get the master plan? Do you know?
I do not know. Ms. Rogers had to step away. Mr. Mafferty's not here. I guess we can get that answer for you another time. I know we have other callers. And
I'm very curious about that because I'm just very curious when we're going to get the master plan.
Okay. Ms. Fel Castro?
We're now a panelist.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Joshua.
If you like, sir. Joshua, you can turn your camera. Yes, sir.
Okay, my name is Joshua Signs. I'm a member of the Bird River Beach Community Association. We are the closest community association to the Lafarge property, and I'm here speaking in opposition to it. I do think that this PUD in this hearing is premature. This was put on so quickly that most of the communities around here have not even been able to have their monthly meeting and vote to be able to say whether they approve or disapprove of this project. Ours did by email this weekend, and we had unanimous opposition to this project. Think we've been inundated with traffic as it is, and this will just bring more traffic. We so far have not completed Greenley. The Middle River Depot is just getting underway. All of this traffic is going out on the 43, which is already starting to get pretty congested. We're talking about putting 2.3 million square foot of warehouse on this property. You know, I've lived here my whole life, and that sand plant there, whether it was Lafarge, Martin Marietta, Campbell, for the last 50 years, has done absolutely no benefit to this community whatsoever. They've never donated to a volunteer fire department. And here we finally get to the end of their quarrying, and their legacy they want to leave behind for us is another warehouse with more traffic to go out the road. The other thing I wanted to state, which is reiterate what Mr. Bendler had said, this property is under the control of the State Mining Department, which when they get done the reclamation of this, they will come in and do bore drilling tests. And I believe at that time, they're going to find that this backfill was not done right, and this is not buildable land. Further, I'd like to also point out, looking at the maps that we have of it, the 200 acres that they're looking to give to the county as the community benefit is the part of the property that was mined the deepest, about 150 to 200 foot deep. And then that backfill was just pushed in over the top, no rolling done, none of the compaction that needs to be done. I have a feeling that you guys are getting a piece of property over there that might not be able to be built on for a very long time on that half of the property. The other half that wasn't mined is the half, of course, that they want to put the warehouses on. The other thing I wanted to state here is, you know, again, I usually fall behind property rights and a property owner being able to do what they want with their property, unless it's completely detrimental to the community around it. And I feel like this community down here has tolerated and put up with this piece of property and these landowners and what they've done for a very long time. I think the RCA was a great thing to do two years ago in designating this. And I do think that the county council does have the right, under zoning, to leave that zoning there. That's about all I really have to say about it. I'm in complete opposition to this, this project.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Signs. Councilman Crandall, check your mic. Sure, next speaker, Ms. Fel Castro.
There's a little glitch in here when you make somebody a panelist. I have to go back and make sure that they're muted once they're an attendee, and I neglected to do that with someone, so I was just double checking myself. The next speaker is Linda Phelps. And let me call. Ms. Phelps, you're now a panelist. You may begin your testimony. Ms. Phelps?
You're muted, Ms. Phelps. You can turn on your mic and your camera if you like.
Mr. Chair, Ms. Phelps is on here three times in our attendee list. Let me try another one of her names. There's one here. One second. Ms. Phelps? That one isn't working either. Ms. Phelps? Mr. Chair, I might have to just try unmuting the microphones because she's on our attendee list three times. I'm not sure which one is the real Ms. Phelps, but let me, let me try this individually. Ms. Phelps?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay, you can hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. My name is Linda Phelps, lifelong resident on Bird River Road, which is very close to Lafarge. I'm also the president of the Bird River Road Neighborhood Association. I am for the PUD because there is so much chatter in this neighborhood right now. It's ridiculous. I am under the impression that any truck traffic is going to go in and out of Benji's Road. When Greenley built, they built for employment purposes. That was all industrial land. Industrial zone land is the highest valued land, and they took half of that away from us, putting in residential. And now they want to put residential on Lafarge. So a lot of people around here are on the fence because they're picking the less of two evils. They are threatened with 2,000 houses for this PUD and all the truck traffic, which we know will go in and out of Benji's Road. Sorry, Ms. Beavins, didn't mean to call you. If we can get a stipulation on that PUD that there is absolutely no housing, no apartments, no residential units, that it's going to bring jobs to Middle River, that's what we need. You're bringing all of these houses in here, and these people are driving away. There's no employment here, as was promised to us when 43 was built. So for that reason, I am in agreement with the PUD.
Thank you very much, Ms. Phelps.
Thank you, Linda. And I do want to add, and I don't know if Councilman Marks is aware of this, it's a great talking point for him, but there are actually more jobs up at forty-three where Greenly is than was ever predicted when they built forty-three with BRAC. There are ten thousand jobs up on Greenly right now, and they never anticipated having ten thousand jobs when they did the extension from forty down to Eastern Avenue. I was there when they opened that road and for the ribbon cutting, and they never thought we'd have ten thousand jobs there. So we actually do have more jobs there than ever predicted, plus the housing. Thank you.
Also at the ribbon cutting.
Uh huh, yeah.
Okay, next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Certainly, Mr. Chair. I'm a speaker. I know Leonard. You're on as a panelist.
Okay, thank you. I don't see how you can get a camera over here. Is that onstage? How we do that? Connected audio use? I don't think so. Anyway, just the comments being made are incredible. I really appreciate it, especially from the, I just moved to Bird River, on the river to be close to my parents who are aging, and I was blessed with that. I came from Parkville, and I fought thirty-five years in the Community and Business Association, and I'm sixty-five. I was tired, and I came down here because of the zoning, the safety of that. I love nature. I love being outdoors. I love the rivers. So I realize now that I've just landed in the belly of the beasts. The overwhelming development, the flooding out onto Ebenezer Road from the Greenly developments is horrendous, and now we're going further with this. I don't want to repeat myself. We all know what a planned up PUD is. I'm against it for this thirty-nine twenty-two. PUDs have been known to be misused. It's common knowledge. It's bypassing the zoning process. We've got R C eight. It's zoned for a certain amount of houses. If the owners of the property want to go ahead with that, then by all means, that's legal and fair, or we wait for the rezoning process. The R C eight purpose to protect reservoir water sheds and extensive, let me see, natural areas. The development subject to performance standards that include site plans, architectural review to ensure preservation of natural resource and rural, rural character. I see nothing in the PUD plan for that. I agree with Mr. Bender, changing it to R C eight was a great idea, but the permitted uses are agricultural on low-density residential. The exemptions are antique shop, bed and breakfast, and a winery. Can you imagine that scene? A winery? Can we even look into that with the owners of that? What a difference in the aesthetic value of this area to have something like that with concerts in a park, rather than this humongous concrete block of crap sitting in the middle of that huge area. There's too great a chasm between the uses of the proposed PUD and the current zoning. And I'm a little nervous, just because, I shouldn't be nervous. I actually teach at Community College of Baltimore County, and I'm used to teaching in front of students, so this is such an important issue. Just quickly, recent years with the Campbell Boulevard and forty-three extensions, which run directly into Windless Run and the Bird River Water Sheds, and these, these, these water fields are what I'm really concerned about. Within the last couple of years, we've had over five hundred acres clear cut. Someone wanted to remove a dead tree, and it took four months to get permission from D N R because they live on the water, and yet right across the road, we're clear cutting five hundred acres. And we're being, I think, pound wise and penny, excuse me, penny wise and pound foolish here. What's the point? So we were, we lost fifty thousand trees that are going from all the development on Campbell Boulevard and forty-three extension. Each of those trees puts out a hundred pounds of oxygen, five, fifty thousand trees times a hundred, you're talking about a half a million pounds of oxygen we're losing each year because of that. And they also remove fifty pounds of carbon dioxide. So you're talking about two and a half million pounds of carbon dioxide that is being released now into our atmosphere, into the rivers, that is already compounded by this. And the PUD proposes removal of trees. I can see from the design that we're going to go all the way back to railway tracks and remove all the trees.
Ms. Leonard, wrap up your comments.
Seriously? I, I talked for a couple minutes.
Now like four minutes. The limit is three.
How long have I been?
Minutes and seven seconds.
All right. Well, can I say a few things? Biggest problem is the runoff. I have documentation with film and, and camera runoff, especially from Greenly, from every which way. Right now, every time we even have a moderate rain, thousands of gallons of water are being dumped directly into the Windless Run, which goes into Bird River. I was told that they, they are not proactive in the county, and we have to report this to them. That seems a little bit tedious for an average person who has to work and raise a family. This isn't fair. There's just, I just need one or two more comments. I spent a lot of time doing this. I know that there's, you know, this is some things that maybe I shouldn't have talked about, the, the statistics, but they're important because they're going to be compounded by this. One of the things that the PUD is that the current Lafarge property is similar to the PUD use, but it's not because the, the Lafarge property was, had not, did not have all these non-pervious surfaces on it. The two environments are not applicable. Light and noise pollution. The Lafarge is shut down at night. We, we will have twenty-four seven of noise and light pollution, which is disruptive to humans and wildlife. I don't even know, we might be an infraction of the Bald Eagle Protection Act from the federal government, because there's eagles all in this environment, and they're being disrupted by developments we're not supposed to be. The PUD says their purpose is to increase demand for industrial office and logistical, logistical space. This isn't true. Half the storefronts at forty-three are still empty. Half the old neighborhood storefronts are empty, and they're shopping centers. We've just recently gotten a logistic center. In the history of the property, they're saying, what you all have already talked about, how zoning back and forth. And the biggest thing that I found when I was doing research was there is aggression associated with development. It's been proven by many, many research sources that if you have nature, it's a calming element to humanity. And by putting this in instead of leaving an open space, this, this PUD is just plain ugly. And I'll let it go. I know it's, I had a lot more to say. Maybe I'll write to you. I'll send the pictures to all the council people of the sludge running off. And as far as the property being donated to county, we were donating county property across Ebenezer Road in the McBride property. Right now, Greenly is running their sludge off the field into that property, which is wetlands, which is supposed to be donated to county, and we don't know what happened to that. So I'll let it go with that and just say, what, what is our legacy here? This is integral turning point. What do we do here with this property? That's all. Thank you for the extra time.
Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro. Thank you for your comments, Ms. Leonard.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is David Conrad. Mr. Conrad, you are on as a panelist. Mr. Conrad?
Yes, we can.
See, the video may kick on, it may not. If not, you guys mostly know who I am. So just wanted to speak on a couple things. First of all, Chairman and Council, I appreciate your time. My name's Dave Conrad. I live in Baltimore County. I'm a business owner. I'm involved in different community organizations, both the Civic Council, our local community organization, the Chamber of Commerce. I've spent a lot of time with this particular issue, just because it's, it's been something that's important to the community. And what I want to do, really, rather than kind of rehash some of the things we're talking about, is just touch on a couple of things, just so you guys can think on it, you know, as you'll be making your deliberations here on, on what you want to do. You know, I appreciate, first of all, that Kathy has put so much time and effort, excuse me, Councilwoman Bevins has put so much time and effort into this project. You know, the community has as well, the stakeholders, the Baltimore County planning, you know, there's been a huge amount of interest and involvement over a three to four-year period on this specific piece of property. You know, things are changing in Eastern Baltimore County. There's very little pieces of property left, and I think that's why this has generated so much interest. And at the end of these, this long, long process, and all the things that you've heard all the panelists and Councilwoman Bevins speak to, at the end of this, we haven't got a consensus on maybe the uses, but I think everybody essentially wants the same thing. Everybody wants the best use of this property, the best possible success for this property, and moving forward as the legacy for this community. Now, I can understand why, you know, Councilwoman Bevins, having put so much of her time and energy into this project, would want to be able to wrap this up before she leaves office. And, you know, I think, I don't want to deal on absolutes here when we're talking about whether or not we feel this process is rushed, or we should, we should pick up or slow down. I don't think by saying that maybe we need more time to look into this PUD, we necessarily say that, that it's been rushed up to this point. I, I think we can look at the business owner's perspective that Ms. Malone gave, as well as some of the other community inputs that's through, and we can see that the side of those members all the way through. What I think we need to look at is, when we step back and look at all the comments that we've heard today, I think it speaks to the significance of this piece of property and this process to our community, for everybody. Everybody's put a lot into it, and do we feel like that this PUD that we're looking at right now, does that take, and is that the best use? Not is it a good idea, or is it something that can be successful, but is it the best possible use that we can come up with? And is it the, what we want the most? Is it what we think is going to be best served for the community and make us successful? And how do we get it to success? How do we, how do we make this successful for our community? Whether it's developed, whether it's made into a field of flowers, or whether it's paved over completely and made industrial warehousing. And I think there's a couple of things that we just need to keep in mind. I just throw into the conversation, and then you guys can, can pick at it if you have any questions. One, we talked about the C Z M P. We can always say, wait till the next C Z M P. Maybe the next C Z M P says, you know, agrees with the PUD, maybe it doesn't. But if we go off the existing twenty-twenty, I'm sorry, not master plan, not the C Z M P. If we go off the existing twenty-twenty, it does call for development on that site, similar to what's been proposed, but it also calls for east-west connections in that same twenty-twenty master plan to make that successful. Those are important and required, at least in the eyes of the twenty-twenty master plan, in order to make that successful. We don't currently have them. Is that a problem we can solve? Sure, maybe, but we haven't really addressed that yet. We've put water and sewer down, because that's needed to do this development. So that's passed through the county council. That also opens up all the other existing properties on Earl's Road that are zoned heavy industrial, similar to what Lafarge was. Those properties are now going to have access to sewer. Their value has increased. They can build by right today with, you know, those types of uses that we're proposing over at Lafarge. Does that mean we don't longer need what would be proposed at Lafarge, and the PUD doesn't make sense? Maybe, maybe not. I don't know, but it's coming. The changes are coming to that Earl's Road corridor coming down. And I just think we need to keep that in mind while we're talking. If we want to wait till the twenty-thirty master plan to see if it makes sense, fine, that's an option. Or do we want to take and use the information we have now? Either way, I would question the council and, and Ms. Bevins, Councilwoman Bevins, to consider the fact that a lot of things have changed in this process. And to Councilwoman Bevins' point, we have, from the Civic Council's perspective, from the community's perspective, at different times, in order to engage in this process, we've looked at, you know, trying to take different positions to try to get the community engagement. And I just think that, at the end of the day, you know, there's just so little property like this left to even have this conversation about. So I think that's what speaks to how important the decisions that we make. You can hear the passion in the voices of the people that are talking about this. Whether you agree or disagree with their uses of the property, they're passionate about their property. And when people are passionate about their property, it improves the overall area. When you have people that are passionate about their business, their property, their development, whatever it is. So I would just encourage the council, you know, I specifically put undecided on here, and I speak personally as myself, not as a member of any of these organizations, when I signed into the chat here, because I really wanted to bring forward some points that I just want the council to consider. I don't, I don't think we need to look at this in black and white. I think we just need to be realistic. We've done an excellent job so far. The county, the review panel, everybody has put so much time and effort into this, and I just want to see that we continue to do that. If the council feels like this PUD is a culmination of all that hard work and the best possible use of this property, then, you know, you guys will vote how you feel is appropriate. Personally, I feel like we might need a little more work on it, but, you know, I'll leave it to the council to discuss and make that decision. I appreciate the time. I know I probably went a good bit over on what my allotted time was, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I appreciate Councilwoman Bevins' work on this. And lastly, I'll just note, as a licensed tradesman, I appreciate Councilman Cox and Kathy Bevins, Councilwoman Bevins' discussion and just bringing to light the, the issues of trade schools and trying to make sure that's, you know, regardless of what we decide on PUD, making sure that's an important part of Eastern Baltimore County marine trades, et cetera, as we move forward. Thank you for the time.
Thank you so much. For your thoughtful message to us. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Conrad. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Mr. Chair, our next speaker is Eric Rockwell. Mr. Rockwell, you are a panelist.
Yes, good afternoon. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the council. I'm going to concentrate on one small part of this decision, and that is the plan that was submitted with the application for the PUD. I've been involved with a variety of PUDs in the past, and I'm surprised that this plan lacks the detail of the property that's necessary to truly evaluate the PUD application. Let me give you a few examples. There's forest stands on this property. The great majority of the property was mined, and therefore there is no forest, but there are forest stands on it. One, for example, in the southwest corner of the property, near one of, one of the warehouses that are proposed, and the forest stand's not shown on the plan. There are similarly other details, like the mining pits on the property that would be dedicated to Baltimore County that are not shown, and all that makes a true evaluation of this property more difficult. Secondly, although the applicant proposes to construct three warehouses, they're also asking for latitude with employment-intensive and auxiliary commercial uses. Now, let me give you just a few of the uses that could go under those two categories: automobile rental agencies, electrical contractors, sheet metal fabricators, banks, taverns, health clubs, bakeries, dormitories, drugstores, food stores under twenty-five-hundred square feet, liquor stores, and auto service stations. Now, the reason I bring that up is because in no place on the plan do they show pad sites for any of those potential uses. And certainly, if you're going to have pad sites for those kind of uses, it may dictate different parking, different traffic patterns, different circulation patterns within the developed property, different lighting and different signage, all of which could impact adjacent residential properties. Finally, I'd like to close by saying that the plan doesn't even give us much detail about the warehouses. The plan shows parking on all four sides of each of the warehouses. Where are the loading docks going to be? Is the warehouse for vehicles to pull into the warehouses? We don't have any of that sort of information. That may have impact on certain residential properties adjacent to this larger parcel as well. So I just offer that as food for thought for the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rockwell. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Our next speaker, Mr. Chair, is James Carroll.
Mr. Carroll, you are now a panelist. You can unmute yourself and turn your camera.
Yep.
Council members, thank you very much for the opportunity to speak. My name is James Carroll. I'm the Director for Environment and Land for Wholesome Mid-Atlantic Region. I wanted to talk to you tonight. First, I appreciate Councilwoman Bevins' comments First, I appreciate Councilwoman Bevins' comments regarding the development of the property. That's really wholesome's goal is that we want to redevelop the property once we are finished with reclamation so that it is something that will be a benefit to Baltimore County and to the surrounding neighborhoods. The things I'm going to talk about tonight, someone raised the issue about the reclamation process. The material that we are bringing onto the site is Class 1 material that is considered to be unrestricted fill according to the Maryland Department of the Environment. Before that material comes onto the site, we actually have the, the contractors and the companies that are generating the material test the soil and then provide us with the sample results. We compare those sample results to the screening criteria that is laid out by the Department of the Environment. And before the material comes on site, we make sure that it's going to be acceptable to that criteria. The second thing I want to mention is that as we are going through and reclaiming, the areas where we have proposed to put the warehouses in the plan, those were areas that were reclaimed several years ago. So it is not virgin territory. It's areas that have already been reclaimed on the south and western side of the site. Currently, we are in the process of reclaiming the areas towards the north and northeast, eastern corner. With that, I would open up for any questions that anyone might have. And I appreciate again the opportunity to speak to the council.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Carroll, any questions from the members?
Chairman.
Great, Councilman Katz.
Yeah, Mr. Carroll, are, is your, are you part of Lafarge? Or what, what company are, I'm confused as to who you are.
Certainly. So if you, this will go back a little bit in history. Several years ago, Lafarge and wholesome merged together and they formed Lafarge Wholesome. Just back in May of this year, Lafarge Wholesome decided to rename itself. And so the company went through a renaming and we are now wholesome U.S. And in this region, it is wholesome hyphen M A R Inc., which would be for the Mid-Atlantic Region. But it's the same, Lafarge, as I said, Lafarge and wholesome merged. And so that is, we are wholesome M A R.
Okay, thank you very much.
Chairman.
Yes, Councilman Marks.
Mr. Carroll, have you made an attempt to reach out to the Essex Middle River Civic Council at all?
I know that we have met with them and we participated in the community work group, which Bob Bendler was a member. And we talked through all the different uses for the property. And in fact, one of the things that came out of that is that, you know, we thought it would be a, a good thing for part of the property to be devoted to the Baltimore County so that it could be used for a public purpose. Hence the 200, and I think it's 221 acres that was set aside for Baltimore County's use.
Okay, but what about the specific application before us?
With regard to, we have not directly met with, or at least I will say, I haven't met with the Essex Middle River Group. I know that members from Chesapeake Real Estate Group have met with Mr. Bendler and to solicit his input with regard to the PUD.
Okay, very good. Well, thank you for answering that as questions. This is the first time I've met you and I've never met anyone from your group. So it's good to hear that. Thank you.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and comments, Mr. Carroll. Next speaker, Ms. Bel Castro.
Mr. Chair. Our next speaker is Chris Mudd. Mr. Mudd, you are on as a panelist.
Evening, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
Okay, can you see me too? I don't know whether my video is on.
No, your video is on, but we're looking at something else, fuzz.
Fuzz, oh, I know why. Yep, there we go.
There you are.
All right, good evening. Thank you all very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the council for, for allowing me to testify this evening. I'm Chris Mudd with Venable, representing the PUD applicant. I work with Ms. Malone. And I just want to take a couple of minutes to clear up a few things that were discussed tonight. But before, before I do that, I want to thank Councilwoman Bevins for her leadership through this effort. As she mentioned, this has been essentially a three-year process for her, where it began prior to the comprehensive zoning map process. Our firm became involved shortly after the CZMP ended. And we met with Councilwoman Bevins on behalf of Lafarge and with Lafarge at that point in time. And she made it perfectly clear that this was going to be a very deliberative process and that it was a process that was going to require a lot of community outreach and community involvement, which it has. One of the first things that we did after that meeting was to meet with Mr. Bendler personally. And, and we did that. And we had a great meeting and it appeared as though there were going to be a lot of great meetings to come. And it kind of has become clear since that point in time that it's been Mr. Bendler's goal, it seems, to actually have this entire property become for public use, a public park. And, and in fact, they said things like Lafarge has made plenty of money and it's time of ownership and now it's time to turn it over to the, to the public. And, and those things were, were difficult to hear and it, it kind of made it clear how things were going to go and working through this process with this group. And we saw things like the Royal Legacy Request come out, which, which if placed on this property would have certainly limited, if not prohibited, development. So that's kind of what we've been up against through this. And despite all that, we've worked with Councilwoman Bevins and to her credit, we've basically had a compromised position here, which is that about half of the property is going to be turned over to Baltimore County for public use. And we can certainly work with, with Mr. Boswick on language to make it clear that that's directed for a school purpose. And then half would be for, for development. And I think that this turned out to actually be a pretty good compromise. And again, to, to the credit of Councilwoman Bevins, who was faced with the potential for development of all of it before the downzoning. And then she took the initiative to, to downzone it as, as the placeholder, as she called it, to put together this, this multi-year process that involved community outreach. We had the, the work group that took months to go through. And among the things that came out of the work group is the, is essentially the plans before you, a mixed use with public on portion and private on another portion. So I think in many respects, that process worked. I want to address a couple of other key points that were, that were mentioned. Mr. Bendler talked about how DEPS, Department of Environment, is, is unable to evaluate this property for purposes of determining forest buffer and forest conservation areas, and it's too soon. Well, that's actually not accurate. We've, we've engaged with that department and we've discussed with them how precisely we could do that through this development process. And as I know the council is aware, after this resolution gets adopted, we would go through the full development review and approval process. And that's the point in time in which DEPS is going to really dig in and we're going to work with DEPS to, to evaluate these areas. And frankly, if, if we can't reach an agreement and work through that with DEPS, then the project can't proceed on that basis, on that, on that process alone. So it's no reason to stop it at this point in time, particularly in light of what we know from DEPS at this point. The second thing I want to address is this notion that, that we need to wait for the master plan. We currently have a master plan. We have a master plan since 2020 that's dedicated or identified this property for business use, for commercial use, for job growth use. And that's what exactly is going to be put here on half of it. The other half, as we talked about, is going to be used for a public purpose, which I think is great. And, and also from a master planning perspective, this property has been zoned industrial for well over half a century until the past three years, which again was a, was a, was a temporary or a placeholder, as Councilwoman Bevins said. The notion that industrial use on this site is somehow foreign or unexpected, given its history, I think, is, is a little bit odd. And I don't think we need to be waiting for a master plan when we currently have a master plan in place that, that, that tells us exactly how to do this. And the last thing, one of the last things I want to talk about, I guess, is, is this, this notion about community involvement. As Ms. Malone mentioned, this, this application was filed in May and we shortly thereafter had a post-submission community meeting where 25 members of the public came to speak, including Mr. Sines and Mr. Bendler. So it's a little surprising for Mr. Sines to be here tonight and suggest that they just learned about this and that they haven't been able to, to, to discuss it and determine what their position would be on the application. There's nothing different in the resolution than was submitted in the application, frankly. And they've known about it for months. And, and I don't, I don't say that other than just for the council to be aware of that. And I, I want the council also to be aware of the fact, again, that this is really, truly the beginning of the process. There's still an entire development review and approval process we have to go through with more community input. Both, and I can, I can say this confidently, there will be community input in the official process and there will be community involvement outside of that process as well. Absolutely confident in that, that, that the development team wants to work with the community to try and address things like their traffic concerns and their environmental concerns and the like. So that will, that will absolutely continue into the future. And then the final point I want to make is just in response to something Mr. Rockwell just said about the level of detail on the submission. Frankly, there is no prescribed level of detail that's required for these site plans. They, some of them are more detailed than others, but certainly what we've submitted is sufficient legally. And, and given at this point that we're at a concept, we're talking about uses, that, that it is sufficient to designate where those uses on the property generally would be. And I think I'm confident as well that the application, and if you were to consult with Mr. Boswick, he would agree, I think, that the application is legally sufficient with regard to the amount of detail that it contains. Thank you all very much. And we certainly hope that the council will, will honor Councilwoman Bevins' wishes to, to help her see this through after her three-plus years of involvement. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mudd. And on that note, and I think that is the last caller, so we will give Councilwoman Bevins the last word unless somebody else wants to say something before Councilwoman Bevins.
Mr. Chair, I just have a question for Councilwoman Bevins, if that's okay.
Sure.
And Mr. Mudd may have answered this, but I just wanted to, I don't know if it's for Councilwoman Bevins or the administration, it relates to the community benefit. So is the county a willing recipient of the 200-plus acres? Is it, you know, I heard some suggestion that the land might be contaminated and, and would that make it a liability? But I thought Mr. Mudd said something about DEPS would review it. And so the question is, what happens if there is no community benefit? You know, if it's, I know, just, I know in my district, there's a, a project that the county is a little reticent to take ownership of because there's a view of some liability and just was curious about that.
Well, in my mind, well, first, you know, all the departments, the state, the county, they've all be involved in the examination, so to speak, and the boring of, of this property. But I would think, and I can't say 100%, but I have had this conversation with them before, that if the school did not go on this property, that they would have to purchase property somewhere else for the school to go on.
And that, would that be stated in the language so that, I, I guess the concern I have is, let's say, down the road, DEPS looks at the property and it, it's, you know, there are issues related to the property. Are we left holding the bag or is there an alternative benefit? Or what happens at that point? And I don't know if it's a question for Mr. Boswick or for...
Yeah, I don't, I don't know the answer to that, Councilman. I really don't. I, I haven't had those negative thoughts on...
And I don't mean to steer this in a...
It's the first, it's the first that I've heard of contamination, just like someone said they're taking dirt that's not. And I knew that when that was being said, that wasn't true because we've already had those conversations. The state oversees what goes into that fill and it is what they call a number one. And, you know, it's rubble, it's the concrete, it's, it's things like that taken off of other job sites, just like what goes to the Reclamation Center up on Philadelphia Route. So that was the first I've heard of contamination, but I guess that's something that could, could happen. And I guess that's a conversation to have with the lawyers. Are you suggesting that that would be put into the PUD?
Well, if it moved forward and then there's no benefit. And I thought Mr. Mudd said that, that the project was dependent on a DEPS review. And so if DEPS reviewed it and found that the, the 200 acres had issues or part of it, you know, how do we treat that at that point?
I can't answer that. I'm not sure about that. And I don't know if Mr. Boswick can answer that right now, if that's something that could be put into the resolution. I would think if it's contaminated, the whole property is not, would be contaminated, not just where the school site's going, right? So I'm not sure.
I think, Mrs. Bevins, we, we would probably need to put something in the resolution that would sort of have a contingency so that if, in the event that the planned community benefit was not tenable, that an alternative community benefit would be, would be addressed and potentially at, at that later date.
Right. And, and in all fairness, that's what happened with the other school site. I know the woman that was on the phone, I forgot her name, where she said she didn't know what happened to the school site. That was the initial site where the school was going to go from another development across the street. And, but it was too many wetlands and underground streams and, and things like that. And that's when I had the opportunity to meet with Lafarge. That's why I said, you know, we want a school site here. And they immediately said, sure. And they agreed to not just the 20-some acres we would need for a school site, but half of the property. So, yeah, so I guess that's, that's going to be another conversation, one I hadn't thought of. So thank you for bringing it to our attention.
I do for your work on this.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, Councilman Katz.
Yeah, Councilman Bevins, you had said that should this not, the site not work for the school, that they would have to purchase, who's they?
Lafarge.
Okay, I just didn't know.
Okay. If they were able, you know, I'm just, I'm having this conversation now and I'm sure everybody, Venable is listening, but in my mind, if there's, if they would be able to still develop 200 acres of it, I would still expect my school site, if it couldn't go there, that they purchase property somewhere in close proximity and the school site would still be built.
Thank you.
Any additional questions or comments? Councilwoman Bevins, you have the last word.
No, I just want to thank everybody for their time. I didn't know there'd be so many speakers, but this is very important to the community. And it's been very important to me and I know that it's going to be very important to Councilman Marks and, and moving forward. And I think that David Conrad said it best, we all want what's best for this property. We really do. And it's just too big of a, you know, it's up against the rails. It's a good economic engine for employment. And to have more than half of it donated back to the county, I thought was a win-win when there could be so many other scenarios of multifamily housing, different housing projects, different things happening on the, on the, the property. And so I appreciate your time. If you have any further questions, please feel free to reach out to my office before Monday and I'll take all things that were discussed here tonight with not just you as my fellow members, but with people that took the time to share their, their thoughts with us. I'll take everything into consideration. So thanks, everybody. That's it, that's all got.
Hey, thank you very much, Councilwoman Bevins. Good night, everyone. Be safe.
Everyone, thank you.